I drive that way too, so watch out.
Alright, we will open back up with protocol. Mr. Luthley.
Here.
Here, Mr. Tracy.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Lutner.
Here.
Sarah. I forget there was a delay. If you know Jamie, she talks a lot, that's why I took Walker. Alright. Um, 1016 Bellevue. Oh yes, sorry, the march has been taken. Alright, 1016 Bellevue. Uh, we had a hearing date set for the meeting that was a no form meeting, so we had it canceled. So really, we just need uh to amend that resolution for a new resolution to set the new hearing date. Correct? So what was that resolution number? So that resolution number was twenty-four dash twenty-seven.
What's it gonna be?
So the new one will be twenty-five dash zero-one. And the new date will be... Be the first meeting in February? So it'd be February third, correct? So to amend that, we're going from resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven to twenty-five dash zero-one. And changing the hearing date to February... Third.
Third?
Third, yes.
Is amend the word that we're looking for? Amend the resolution?
Yes, it'll replace it technically, so.
I make a motion that we replace resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven with resolution twenty-five dash one. And move the hearing date from ten sixteen Bellevue to February third.
We have a motion by Bob La Turner to replace resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven with twenty-five dash zero-one. And uh to set the hearing date at February eighth third.
Second.
Second by Neil Oglesby. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff Crawford.
He is not eligible to come, but he is requesting that some mowing assessments be removed from his taxes. Uh, he bought this at the tax sale. Once he did take possession, he did start mowing it. And he has fixed almost all the issues that he was much not had with it. The mowing assessments were five fifty. His plan is to actually move in the home.
Where is the property?
Eleven eleven North Forest.
Oh.
Or Shiger Houston? Okay, around Bill Muggs?
Yeah.
So five fifty?
Five hundred fifty total. He's paid all the other taxes on the property.
So he's requesting five fifty mowing fees. Be waived. Uh, as I understand, he's kept up with mowing since he took ownership?
Yes.
And he's been fixing it up and plans to move in when it's done.
I make a motion that we waive the five hundred fifty dollar mowing fees. Since they occurred before he took the house. And he's kept up with the mowing and he's fixing the problems, so... Looks to me like he's gonna fix the house up and move back into it.
We have a motion, oh, sorry, a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion by Bob La Turner to waive the five hundred fifty dollar mowing fee at eleven eleven North Forest.
Second.
We have a second by Jamie Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Jeremy Stroup.
Are you doing it? Yep, that is the same thing, so... There's a nine hundred dollar mowing fee for ten fifteen Euclid. He took over mowing once, he took over the property from the tax sale, and his plan is to build another home in that location. He's already built two in that same block. Block and a half, I guess.
Nine hundred or eighteen?
It's eighteen hundred, sorry.
Mow all, that's all mowing?
It is all mowing.
He bought it at the tax sale?
He did, and he's paid up all the other taxes.
That's a lot of money in a way, but I think it's money well spent. You know, he has a reputation of building.
He's done a lot of building.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we uh waive the eighteen hundred dollar mowing fee.
We have a motion by Bob.
Whoa.
By Bob La Turner. Jamie Jackson to waive the mowing fee at ten fifteen Euclid. All in favor? Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Charles Lawley.
Carl, you have any information?
We don't have any information on that. Linda Fitz. Come on up.
Okay. Did you all read your little notes? So you all know I'm standing up here. Um, it's time for me to step down. Uh, I still wanna be the Monday girl and be there on, for three hours on Monday, but it's time for someone else to take over there. Running a museum, we need someone that's more qualified in technology. Uh, someone that knows how to find grants and apply for grants. There's a lot of grant money out here, but I'm just too tired to do it anymore, so.
And you like to travel?
And I like to travel, and my grandkids want to do this part-time work, so.
Aye.
We're hoping that the city can find some funding to uh hire a part-time position person. I don't know if you looked at all of the duties, it's a lot. It's a lot to run a museum. And uh finding someone to volunteer to take over has been a... I've been looking as a volunteer. So if we could find someone that would be qualified to step into that, we, Carl and I would be very happy. So um...
And Linda downs herself a lot, but she stepped in uh when Joe and Linda Faye were um aging and their health was deteriorating. And Linda stepped in and um graciously took over, and if you've not visited the museum, you should go see all the stuff that she's done uh to push upgrades. It's been a whole lot, especially in the car room. Um, it's a lot, and she'll say that she's not qualified, but she's done a whole lot to keep that place going. Really, really have, and then extra events on top of that, not just keeping it open, but she does holiday events and uh instrumental and tea parties for kids and making sure people get in the door to really see the history of the museum, so she has done a lot, even though she doesn't wanna say she has, she really has.
It takes a village, as you know.
Yes, Carl, yes, Carla is like Linda's right-hand woman. Uh, she does...
And left hand, and she broke her right hand, so now she's...
So she has people on tape. Yeah, so Carla gets the same accolades that Linda does, because I know she's done a lot too. Um, Tracy and I actually have somebody that we think would maybe step in, maybe. Um, not a pain, do a similar volunteer, so they're retired, um, but I've not personally spoke with them, so maybe in the next couple days. Um, because our thought was that they can get with you and start the training process.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I will do this until the end of February and then somebody else will have to do it.
So we think um these two ladies, they're, they're related, like I said, their retirement age, I don't know for sure that they're retired, but uh retirement age, they wanna be involved, they want things to do. So um I, we think this would be kind of right up their alley.
Oh, perfect.
Yes, yes. So actually, I'd spread the word that if they were willing to come, because I knew you would be here tonight, uh, but it was just this afternoon, so probably time, time-wise, that was a little abrupt, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, but um... But if that doesn't work out, if, if that's something we could consider in the future as far as...
I think we could for sure uh help out, make sure the bills were paid and stuff, as far as, this is just my opinion, but uh we approved the budget in Sep... Well, it has to be done in September, so as far as having money allotted for, you know, an employee right now. I don't think we have that, um, again, that's just my opinion, but I think the museum is very uh vital for our community too, so we will do, I think, what we have to make sure it's go. Yes. Um, but before you leave, um, and I know you are a woman that would hate this, but I think Linda deserves um a rose of blood, and Carla. Because it's a lot, and especially volunteer, if you've never volunteered in your life, it's a lot from getting nothing. And I know you get something, but...
You get a lot back.
Yeah, you get a lot back, but it's very appreciated.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Linda and Carla. Did you get that on the news? Come on. What news did you show you with?
Uh, KOAM.
KOAM, alright.
It's like...
Huh? Oh. No, we're glad you're here. Um, alright, Dusty Wells. Come on up.
She come with me, she talks better than I do.
Well, no, she's very young when I, when I saw her out there with the camera, so I'm like, she's making him do the dirty part.
I was like, I didn't put on makeup, that's all.
Our issue is the odor.
Yeah, we just kinda wanna talk about like, what all has been looked into? And how have those ideas been looked into, but we're not trying to play, play a game here, we just wanna find and fix it. Right, it's, it gets in our house, it's, it's bad.
Yes. So we've asked Michelle, so hello, Michelle. This is Michelle, um, she, I don't wanna get your title wrong, general manager, general manager, um, at Jordan Disposal. Very nice lady to work with, so if you guys would come and just maybe answer some questions, some stuff uh that they've done on their side. I'll say for me personally, probably, I don't know about you guys, but I probably started noticing, maybe a couple months ago. Um, it was sometime late fall that I started noticing it. Um, at first I had no idea what the smell was, and I'll tell you, I, so I live at about Eleventh and Wood, I don't smell it from my house. Um, maybe twice in the last couple months is when I smelled it. But if I come out of the school in the evenings, I've smelled it there a, a lot of times. Always to me in the evenings, I don't know if that's...
It's mornings anyway.
Primarily.
It depends on the way the wind blows.
Yes, so...
Yesterday, we can smell it during the day.
During the, yeah.
With, does happen sometimes, but it does seem like the majority of it comes at night and or through the overnight hours.
Sure. So um, we, we have a good relationship with Jordan Disposal, um, we've talked to them, um, so we've asked Michelle to come. Um, I'm sure she will share, but KDHE, which is the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, were there first day?
Friday.
Friday, um, and we got clear, I don't know if that's the right term to use, but a clear inspection or a good inspection, I don't know, I'm sure she'll mention that, because she'll know the terms to use better than I did. So if you wanna, whatever you would like to share.
Sure. Um, okay, so I was made aware of all the Facebook posts, so I started, just wanted to be a fly on the wall, so I could kinda keep an eye on what was kinda going on. Um, when everything, we started getting the blame, the landfill did. Um, I called KDHE and asked them for help. We do have a small odor, I didn't realize, some of the posts said you could smell it all the way to Twenty-first Street. Blanketing the whole town, and that's not what odor is coming from the landfill. We have a moist area on the landfill, probably a fourth of the size of this center area, so a very, very, very small area. Um, and around that area, it kinda has a rotten egg smell. Uh, so I called KDHE and said, "Help, we are getting blasted on Facebook, I, we have an odor, it is a slight odor, it is nothing compared to whatever all the citizens are saying on Facebook." Um, I said, "From our research, the rotten egg smell is the gypsum in the drywall, that's all that we can kinda find, that's all that we can kinda come up with, help," you know? And so he said that, "We're due for an inspection," he did have, I think he said, "Two complaints." Uh, one complaint was an odor and that we were excavating late at night. Um, I assured him, "We are not excavating late at night," so I'm not sure where that complaint came from. And he said, "So he'll get us on the books and he'll come and do an inspection." Um, he showed up on Friday, so he was there to address and go ahead and do our yearly inspection and then to address the odor. Um, I took him around the entire landfill, um, he said the odor is minute, it is nowhere near anything. He said before he came to the landfill, um, he came, went to Casey's, because he said that that was a location that everybody said they could smell it. He went to Casey's, he went to Dairy Queen, he went to Yesway, talked to a couple people at Yesway, um, the gas station. Um, couldn't smell anything, came up, um, Front Street from Galena, said that he couldn't smell anything, then he came up and we did our inspection. Um, we went around the landfill, he said there was no odor. The smell that we're smelling is just a normal decomposure on the landfill, so it's nowhere near the odor that everybody is saying, so I'm not sure where it's coming from. Um, I took him and had him inspect the material that we're putting in, because there were people saying that we're putting material in the landfill that doesn't belong in the landfill. Um, he inspected that. We're perfectly fine there, um, went over all of our paperwork and everything, so... We have a, you know, a good, good inspection, everything cleared on his end, um, the smell is not coming from the landfill.
So I have driven around the last, probably three nights in a row. Um, night, four last, I was coming from Joplin, so I was coming up Twentieth. Uh, by always morning, didn't smell anything, and will also say I've had COVID three times, I'm not sure if my smell is off from that or not, I don't know. So I decided to drive the back way, so I, I went behind Galena Estates, past Yesway, and up uh state line that way. And it was probably right about B and B where I started smelling, I had to roll my window down, because I didn't smell it just in my car, but I rolled my window down. That's where I started smelling it again, and smelled it probably up until about Paul Nolan's place on Main, which is, what is that, Paul?
Third Main.
Third Main. Um, so I smelled all the way around there, and then kinda almost dissipated. Now, that was just me. It wasn't near as strong, like I said, Friday night, uh, last Friday night, I left the school about five thirty. You could, it like hit you in the face, leaving the school at five thirty. Um, and it's always that, again, I say, it's always at night when I've smelled it worse than after, it's during the day. Um, I knew you said, was it today, you said you smelled it during the day?
Yeah, but it's more mild during the day.
More mild in the evenings. Um, it really is, evening time is potent, I mean, I think, I think that, that is...
And KDHE agreed that if it was coming from the landfill, it would be worse when we're active, because we're stirring it up. It wouldn't make any sense when we're not doing anything. And it wouldn't make any sense that it gets stronger, comes and goes, it should be a consistent odor if it was from the landfill.
And that's what I wondered, except for uh in speaking with Mads, um, he was mentioning something about, well, he mentioned temperature, moisture, uh, air pressure, and wind speed all have factors into all that, and I have no idea, I'm not a meteorologist, I like to think I am, because I'm really the one, but I'm really not. So I don't really know anything about all of that, uh, because I was like, I've talked to Josh, and he has been involved in this any longer than I have, and he doesn't remember a time that it's been anything like this. Right, for, for a consistent period of time, where it's almost every evening morning. Um, and he doesn't, because if we were thinking wolf foot was that, we get low temps every winter.
Correct. Um, we're not operating any differently, we're not doing anything any differently. Um, I ran the landfill for, I think, five years now, so it... We would've noticed something sooner, nothing's being ran any differently, we're doing everything by the book. Um, like I said, as soon as I saw the post on, I called KDHE myself and said, "Help, I'm getting blasted and I don't like where this is going." So, because we're not doing anything wrong. Right. So I, I called them in and had them, and they went ahead and did the inspection and everything like that, so everything came clear, I emailed it to you guys, I didn't bring any of the paperwork today or anything like that, but just so you guys would have it for your record, that we had a good inspection.
My, my question is, is it, I don't know what I could talk about.
Oh, you were, you were trying to...
Um, so my question for Dusty, is it like all the time?
No, it's, it's often on, but here it's been a lot more, it's more than just, because before, like in the summertime, because I did smell it then, a couple days through the summer, and now it's more frequent, it's five days.
A rotten egg smell?
Yeah.
Well, and, and I appreciate all you're doing, there's literally nothing else it can be besides the, the landfill, I mean, right? There's nothing else over there.
We've been over there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that, that would have to be unless there's some farm of fertilizing or something. So...
May I ask what else has been looked into?
That was also brought up too.
What else has the city looked at? I'm not saying that it is or isn't the landfill, I'm saying, what else, don't, are we putting all our eggs in the basket, what else are we doing to look into other possibilities?
Well, what she's saying, we're putting all our bad eggs in the basket, but uh, can we call State and have them do some air monitoring?
Air monitoring? Probably. We have worked into the sewer, and that's been, the sewer's been one that we've heard people say it's probably coming from the sewer, that's not, not it. Um, we had somebody ask about the water, um, if it's coming somehow through there, um, and again, I don't know all the logistics of that, but if that were the case, it would be everybody's water. It's like the smell, not stuff, but it would be smell. Um, and it would be everybody's water that gets city water through town.
You clearly don't live in Columbus, so that's not a problem.
I don't know what that means, but... So that, I thought, I questioned maybe Republic, because, you know, trucks are all the, and it's just down from you guys. Um, but they don't do, it's just, yeah, they don't store it, and they just move it on, so um, the thought was, they don't keep anything there long-term, or it would...
The only thing else that was brought to, the old owner of the landfill, Brian Jordan, um, is still really good friends with the new owner, Mads. Um, so they discussed this, and Brian had brought up Nutrine PCS, um, that their process when they burn, when they turn limestone into, I don't know what they do. Uh, but that they don't have cleaners on their burners, so they're literally pumping pure sulfur into the air. Their factory basically is on the other side of the railroad tracks behind Republic, and everything kinda sits in that valley. Whether this is true or not, I don't know, because I don't have all the answers. Um, and so when the wind blows a certain way, but that's where the smell's coming from and why it's so strong. But that was just a suggestion, a just a...
I think we need something more scientific than our noses.
Absolutely, you can.
I think what Lauren said was a great idea, some kind of air monitoring or something.
Yeah.
To me, it smells like sulfur dioxide, which Jayhawk used to pump, pump into the air after the dog. So I went out there and drove around with my windows down, I couldn't smell it out here, while I smelled it in town.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, again, I'm using my nose.
It's hard to pinpoint the smell.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's really hard.
The, the smell, to me, has been very consistent of what the smell is.
Well, one thing, I walked, you guys ever walked around the dump and all that stuff, out in the grass, you guys done that? So that's kinda what you gotta do, but I walked out of the house, I did it one time, I went outside, put my, licked my finger, felt the air, which way it's coming, I went to that side and there was. I mean, you know which way, the, wherever the wind's blowing, it's right there. I mean, so it's not hard to kinda figure out where it's at.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's landfill, but it's in that west side.
It is in that area.
Right.
You can tell it's coming from...
Now, I will say, the landfill, the area on the um, south, no, the west end that we excavated, that we're filling right now, that faces Luigi's Truck Stop and the bridge and all that. We excavated out that area to put the material in, because you excavate to bedrock. Uh, when we dug that soil up, it smelled horrendous, it smelled like rotten eggs. Um, that soil is now where we have a big excavator sitting kind of on that southwest corner, that is where that soil is. So I took KDHE there, around that south end, to say, "Maybe it's the soil that still smells, I don't know." Um, it didn't, we broke it up and smelled it, we were literally doing everything we possibly could to find the smell. Um, if it's the landfill, we wanna take care of it. Um, it's not something that we wanna ignore or anything like that, but we couldn't find, there was one area on the landfill that we're gonna put heavier cover on and see if that helps, but the smell is coming nowhere near what everybody's describing.
How often do you cover?
We cover at, every two thousand tons or a hundred and twenty days. We never hit the hundred and twenty days, we always cover two thousand tons.
So on average, how many days?
Um, in the summertime, we cover about every two, two and a half weeks, in the winter, it's about every three, three and a half weeks.
So Dusty, Dusty.
Yeah.
Does, does the smell change about every three weeks?
It doesn't seem like it, it seems like the same smell.
No, and the material that we're covering is gonna be, it's not gonna be in that decomposures stage yet, it would be the much older.
Well, your sheep rugs will be.
Right.
And that's why you're having this issue, is wintertime, pressure's lower, holds air down, and we're getting moisture that we didn't get all summer long. So it wasn't decomposing in the summer.
Yeah.
It is now, because we're getting moisture.
Is it possible to have KDHE come out in the, since we don't smell it during the day, to have him come out in the evening?
And specifically say it's more predominant, yeah, so...
When you start smelling it in the evening.
Yes.
It'll get worse and worse as the night goes on.
Yeah.
And then in the morning, is when it's added, it's worse, but then it just dissipates.
We have a mechanic that shows up about four thirty-five o'clock to start our equipment and stuff, and even he says it's not that bad on the landfill. Because he's...
So I think what we'll, I'm sorry.
You're okay, you're okay.
You're right. Um, I think what we'll do is Josh will reach out to KDHE, so KDHE uh answers to EPA, is that correct, how that works?
Kind of, sort of, yeah.
So we'll call them first, uh, to see what they have available as far as, I don't know, and, and Josh wasn't certain as far as there an air test, can you send somebody with something? Um, but Josh will specifically ask to come in the evenings, because we, we won't get anywhere if it's two o'clock in the afternoon and there's no...
Yeah.
Or not as bad of a smell.
It made sense if it was a factory process, being that you guys can pinpoint the time in the evening and pinpoint the time in the morning, where it would be like, if it's a process that the factory's doing, it would kinda make sense. But again, I don't know, I don't have all the answers, I just, we're just trying to figure it out, just like you guys are.
Yeah. So we'll do, I mean, can you call tomorrow or email tomorrow? Josh will call tomorrow and add request for somebody to come. Um, and even if that's somewhere you and I meet in the evening, I'd be willing to do that. Um, and we'll, we'll even let you know um when that is set up. Is that...
So you'd update?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
At least when, hopefully they'll send somebody, um, because at least now they're familiar, or at least they know that there's a smell problem, wherever that's coming from.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully they'll do that sooner than later. That, at least a starting point, and then they can help us find what's...
I wanna see progress, I'm, I want it taken care of.
Yeah. So we'll call tomorrow, Josh can let me know what they say, um, and then we'll at least give that much out, what, what they have to say about that. Any other question for Michelle? Michelle, thank you for...
Yeah, thank you guys.
Jamie, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Erin Perry.
I wanna do a uh follow-up. This is a follow-up to a concern that was brought uh last month for signage. Uh, the concerns were the signs coming into town that had the question mark, it said travel info and an arrow, and then the two signs that directed people to the tourist information center. So the signs come in and the complaint was it obstructed and stuff. Well, I believe the resolution has been fixed, found on that, um, the state said that the signs were too low, and the state, I believe, is going to provide proper poles on their dime to put those in and move them up. Talking with the state and the tourism people though, they're getting sick and tired of hearing about our signs. Just putting that out there, they're tired of the pettiness of the signs. The signs on Main, the concern, at least what was told to you guys, was structural integrity of the poles. I went and I counted seventy-four light poles. Of the seventy-four light poles that I counted, seventy-four of them have two little stanchions coming out, the whole canvas banners on them. Twenty-eight of them have a thirty-five pound speaker. Now, I did not measure and weigh the speaker, I put a ladder out there by my business, climbed up there, took pictures of the speaker, and did internet research and found that it's roughly about a thirty-five pound speaker. Nine of them have parking signs on them, five have speed limit signs on them, three have the three sign combination for the travel information, three of them have a folding stop sign. Two of them have a sign with the name of the travel information center, ones that were brought to your attention. One has two signs that says historic byways on Edward sixty-six. I have no idea how many of them actually in the summertime hold planters full of dirt, with flowers and water, which is weight on the signs. So what you see here on the first page is pictures of the light posts that supposedly they're worried about the structure integrity of... So what you see here on the first page is pictures of the light posts that supposedly they're worried about the structural integrity of. I don't get into this issue. Well, that's all right, you can look at pictures, they're colored, I paid for them to be printed. But anyway, I'm calling BS on their argument for structural integrity. What the real reason is, you'll have to talk to them, but I'm calling BS on that. Because if it was truly a structural integrity issue, we would not have thirty-five pound speakers hanging on them with canvas banners that we put out each year, or planters on them. So that's not the issue, so please don't be fooled on that one. On the second page are snippets of two posts that I did for the travel information center with the signs. The first one, and you can go to Gearhead Heroes and see what the posts are. So the first one you see has over nine thousand views and forty-seven hundred reaches and nothing but positive feedback. I put a couple of the comments on there. The second one, which shows the building and also the signs that are in question, as of, uh, this morning when I printed this, it was thirteen thousand four hundred views, uh, when I last looked, it was pushing fourteen thousand views. And if you look at it, you'll see both of them are non-followers of that business. So this is the people that are traveling through that we want to see these signs and they all have positive feedback. So per the mayor, during the meeting, it was to be discussed with Route sixty-six association. The Route sixty-six association has discussed it, but we would prefer to meet with the byways committee as the association and talk to them about it, because as an association, you and I could be a packer association, we really don't have any influence on Main Street, but the byways is affiliated with the state and that is a historic byway being Route sixty-six. So, I would like to present, if you want to put me on the agenda for next meeting in two weeks, with the feedback of what the association recommends with the support of the byways committee, but.
Is the byways meeting between now and then, I guess?
It is, it is this week.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, so, I guess, forgive me, but I don't, I don't remember seeing, hearing anything about structural integrity on the poles. The concern that I had when it's brought up was the elevation of what was there. And then, the, I guess it was alluded to the fact that we pulled down some Route sixty-six signs and.
I don't know what Route sixty-six signs would have been pulled down.
I don't know, that's just what I.
Yeah, but they said structural integrity.
Okay, well, I guess I missed that one, because I would.
So did I.
Call BS on that, but I don't remember.
I believe it's even on the last stream.
Huh?
I believe it's even on the last stream where that was said.
Maybe I just missed it.
There was, there was one, I believe it was a, one of these brown, this Route sixty-six signs, it was removed so we could install those. Then our lift broke down, so we didn't get it put back up, it's very handy. So it's not, the guy's not going to climb up there with a ladder and put it on. So we have that to be put on, the lift is fixed now, but it's twenty degrees up, so when we take the Christmas decorations, that sign will go back up. There's still two missing that the state took down, two or three years ago. Um, for whatever reason, they're telling me that they don't replace the historic byway sign, so I have to get it figured out, where they go, where they were, and get those reworded and replaced. The, I, I don't even know why this is going on tonight, because as far as I'm concerned, this is settled. The city has no say in what's done on the state highway. The sixty-six committees don't have anything to do with traffic control. This is a done issue, the state's going to put sign posts up and it's over with. So I'm not sure what's going on.
I'm, I'm giving a, a follow-up per the mayor's request, I mean, if it's a done deal and we're good with what's going on, there's no need to put me on the agenda next week, I don't need to bring up.
I think as long as the state comes in and raises them to the level that is required.
Tracy, I had a meeting with the state of three, so, and they're just waiting to get the poles put in.
So I'm good with that.
Sweet.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Toodles to that answer, I like that resolution.
Thanks for the color.
But that color picture, enjoy it, I paid money to have those printed.
All right, Christine La Turner, you were up. Where are you today?
Mine's pretty simple too, big, quick, easy. Um, I had talked to you guys a few weeks ago, uh, and I just kind of need a simple yes, um, that you guys are able to see my emails, uh, and that they're being read. Um, that way, nobody is surprised when things start happening, yes.
I get, I get your emails, yes.
Yes, you do, okay. Um, uh, because I am still working on the special programs, seriously, in the community, seriously, in the community about getting a church to help the seniors and all the other programs that we had previously discussed that I am working on. And whenever you start getting contacted by people that I have talked to or that I have worked with, um, there's no surprise, so I just want to make sure that you are reading the emails and that you're seeing the emails. That's it.
Okay.
All right, hon.
Thank you. Free schedule, come on. How are you this evening?
Excuse me?
Said, how are you this evening?
Oh, I'm here. Well, uh, free speech. It's a wonderful thing, it's constitutionally protected, um. The reason that our constitution, our founding fathers wrote protections into the First Amendment to protect free speech is because it prevents bodies like this from interfering with that. You know, everybody likes it when it's, it goes good, like, uh, gentleman's back there and you get a good resolution and then everything's settled. But when things don't get settled and there's, uh, derogatory things said or criticism of people who've said in you all seats, um, that often gets shut down and it has done, it has happened here and there, you've done it several times. Selectively limiting speech, uh, like tonight, I noticed that now the clock's ticking. Earlier it wasn't ticking because it was more of an acceptable, uh, uh, situation where we wanted, uh, Jordan's disposal to discuss issues on the dump. Let's go to the dump, um, the smell definitely coming from the dump. I know Michelle says, KDHE says it isn't, there's no doubt it's coming from there. And obviously, it's from decaying debris, it's very deep, you watch out there in the evenings, especially as it's getting colder now, you'll see steam coming up out of several pockets where gas is releasing. When stuff decomposes and it makes gas, it's going to come up. The air pressure, like Matt said, is going to hold it down closer to the surface. And whichever way the wind is blowing, that's who gets to smell it for the day or the night or the morning or whatever. Um, I haven't read back through the permit for that dump, uh, I don't know who right now is on that landfill committee, but I think it's on that committee to review the permit, make sure that everything's being done for the permit, it probably is. I think it's a very lackadaisic permit, it probably needs to be improved, but that would be something KDHE would have to implement and then I think it's upon the city to oversee that, since it is the city's, even though we have an operator to run it. So, shoving it off on Michelle, she simply have to answer all those questions. Uh, it might be helpful, but the city has a stake in that, it's, it's our land, it's public land. So, you all should take that up, whoever is on that committee, redo it and act accordingly so that, uh, if it's gases or whatever, there's a way to remediate those gases so that we don't get that smell. That dump's going to be there a long time, it's, it's going to keep going, it's going to get worse every year. As more and more decomposes, it's, it's going to get worse. So, I got another issue, I, 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 um, am opposing the restrictions and censorship of free speech. Uh, I'm going to keep doing it, I'm not going to stop, it's a right that I think is, uh, is very important for all of us. Another one is access to information. Um, there's been a whole lot of records we pressed that have been denied. I'm going to keep pushing for those, as we know, there's a small claim, uh, in action right now. Uh, literally started over a three hundred and forty dollar, um, charge that never should have been charged uh, for to buy a device when I simply asked to inspect and review public records, happened to be video records. The city needs to reform, the city needs to improve those things, because it's, that push for getting information is only going to increase, it's not going to decrease. People are getting tired of being kept in the door and fed bullshit, they just are. So, I'm asking you all, and we've got a new member on tonight, I've, I've requested every member that's ever been on this board to meet with me personally, to go over some issues, to try to find solutions, instead of a way to kick the can down the road and keep fighting. So sir, I, I extend that, uh, ask, uh, the request to you that we arrange a time so that we can meet. I can express to you what my concerns and my grievances have been, and I would ask that you take those up and give them serious consideration and bring them back to the rest of the council.
It's a council problem, not a me problem, okay?
Exactly. But you're a new guy, you're a new guy on the block, so I haven't made that request to you specifically, so now I am. And I'd like to do that, and from everything I know about you, I think, I know you to be a reasonable individual and I, I think that.
We invite you sometimes not, so.
Yeah, don't give me too much.
We all have our homes.
Don't give me too much.
Good enough.
Thank you. All right, department heads, the fire chief is going to be here tonight, he had to pick up his wife from the airport, she got a flight in early for the weather, so that's where he'll be at. Uh, please, Mark.
Uh, we had a successful DUI check lane, uh, on New Year's Eve, so this, we had a lot of contacts with a lot of people and, um, there was two individuals that, um, charges are being submitted, one for DUI, one possession, so. I feel like it was a very successful time down there.
Anything else?
Do you want me to redenote?
You'll wait, you'll be in.
Sure.
Uh, city attorneys?
Nothing.
Say work.
I need, I need post velocity for our monthly billing for the year, so we need to send seven thousand dollars to post velocity to mail out monthly billing for utilities. That should give us the balance for the year.
So this is postage for utilities.
Yeah, utility bills.
Okay, so paying, uh, year upfront, ten thousand dollars for postage for utility bills is the request. If anybody would like to do that, or not. No, sorry, I didn't mean to rush. We have a motion by Neil Oglesby, what is it, please?
Post velocity.
Post, post velocity, there you go.
For, uh, to pay ten thousand dollars for utility billing, uh, to post velocity.
Second.
Second by Bob La Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that's all that, okay.
See you, superintendent?
So I'd like to buy an equipment trailer. Looked at it wrong when I said buy it in. Um, we've got one right now, we've got a couple pieces of equipment, it's been hard to use both pieces, which I think I bought my personal trailer a few times, but I'd like to not do that. Um, I've got three bids, we've got one from Lambert Tractor, their twenty twenty-four Texas ride. These are all going to be twenty-foot equipment trailers by eighty-three inches wide and fourteen thousand pounds. They've got, it's a used twenty twenty-four, it's the only trailer they have, uh, they said it retails at seventy-nine hundred, they would sell it for sixty-six fifty, it's been used for about a year.
Same rating since the twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. RNS Trailer Sales out of Web City, um, this is a Stag brand. Fourteen thousand pound stand-up brands, twenty-five, three, fifty-four, twenty-five. And Sandcrest Trailer Sales out of Sarcoxy. Um, this one's a Load Trail trailer, by far the superior brand of three, fifty-nine ninety-five. What I like better about it is that it has I-beam frame instead of C-channel frame. It's going to be stronger for longer, that's the one I would prefer the council approve me to purchase. It's five hundred dollars more than this one.
So we have three bids, we've got a high bid of sixty-six fifty, a low bid of fifty-four twenty-five. He's requesting the middle bid at fifty-nine ninety-five and it's a little better, better quality.
And we have a trailer now that is four out?
No, we have one, we've got two pieces of equipment we need to take, so we have to shuffle them back and forth and maybe have two.
And you've been taking your own personal trailer up here to do that work?
At times I do, it hasn't been a big deal, but if we have one machine out at the cemetery and we need to take the other machine somewhere else, you go get the trailer from the cemetery, he's got to come back and get it when he's ready to load up and it'd be convenient to have another trailer. You're just adding mileage and hours doing that.
That's it.
There's one in Sarcoxy, no?
Yeah. Yeah, the two, the one from RNS Trailer and Sandcrest Traders are both.
And the one that you recommended was five thousand nine hundred ninety-five?
Yes.
And, and what brand was that?
Load Trail.
Load Trail?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'd certainly make a motion that we allow the city to get the trailer.
Second. We have a motion by Rick Tracy, a second by Chastity Reynolds for purchase of the, is it Sandcrest? From Sandcrest at five thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
They had an update, um, there's a ten twenty Main Street, we got the bid for demo. I spoke with Michelle at the landfill, that stuff cannot be taken to the landfill because it is a hoarder house. It would have to be sorted or just all taken to the transfer station. So the cost to do that, I don't know, I don't have any idea how many tons would be in that house. Um, there's probably some formulas we can use to get close, but we're looking at seventy dollars a ton, plus two hundred dollars per thirty-yard box to haul it all over there. And I, I don't know if Candace is ready now to go forward with that or if there's any special things that we need to do. Well, based on the contents of the house as well, stuff, if we tear down a house, people have gotten things out of it they want to get out of it, so.
Right, that's.
No family.
I know Jamie's been in contact with his family popping on, so. I would like to give that, them that opportunity to come in.
Yes, I have.
And take out what they, what they want.
Jamie, could you do that?
Yes, how long do they have?
We're not, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this has been going on a long time, so.
Yes, it has.
I mean.
I think they both think they're too old to get in there, but I think they could get the sister down here or somebody in there.
Yeah.
To go in there and get what they want out of it, it's already being filtered pretty bad.
Yeah, so maybe if you could, you think you could at least get us an update by next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I can.
And what if they say they don't want anything?
Oh, they already got a list.
Oh, okay, well, good, and then, and then that will be a problem. Okay. And then after that, we can get a better idea about how much.
We can certainly estimate it, but, you know, the last one I estimated, we went over by four roll-offs because they added a garage and other things by the time we got there, and so I hate to put a, a solid number on it, just.
Right.
I think I told Michelle we'd need eight boxes on the last one, we used twelve, so.
Okay. So Jamie will contact, uh, family again to see if they'll go pick stuff out of the house or whatever they want. Is that good with you, Jamie?
Yep, that's good with me.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Can I do a request?
Yep.
Um, Haley Valugan is asking for the Assembly of God, um, if the city would sponsor the egg hunts again and they want to secure the city park, um, April twelfth from twelve to four. They said they had over three hundred kids last year and the city did five hundred dollars.
So Easter egg hunt, is this Galena Assembly?
Yes.
Galena Assembly hosts the community Easter egg hunt, um, so let's do first, just, do we need a motion to visit the park? Okay, so she'll just put it down. All right, so, April twelfth, twelve to four at the city park, Tracy will note that. Tracy will note that. And then they're requesting donations, I'm assuming for like candy prizes?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know. I don't remember what all they did last year, but, um, five hundred dollars, what we did last?
Yes.
Making that a motion?
Aye.
I'll second that.
Chastie, you motioned it? Yes. We have a motion by Chastie Riddles, a second by Neil Oglesby to approve five hundred dollars donated to the community Easter egg hunt hosted by Galena's of Galena. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
May.
One may. Got it? Okay. Um, I have a letter here I need to read. So it says, Dear Mayor, Department Heads and Fellow Council Members, I join the council with the hope of helping make a difference, as I am sure we all do. I find that this is not as possible as I had hoped. I know there will always be issues to deal with, but it seems that those at hand are all that get discussed, and we seem to be getting nowhere. I hope by stepping down from my position, it allows someone better suited to step in and help make a bigger difference. As a volunteer council member and a taxpayer of the city, the thought of being harassed, threatened, videoed, and the looming lawsuits is something I do not consider a perk. There never seems to be an end in sight to others' dissatisfaction with anything we do or do not do. I like to see good, positive outcomes and making others happy and our city moving forward, but it is sad that all of this has had to come to a standstill. It is with that hope that my resignation and other vacant seats will signal that other action needs to be taken. I've considered it an honor to be a part of the council and represent our little town for almost seven years and will continue to be a part of this community in other aspects. Nancy Flint. So she is officially, this was actually probably last meeting, so it's good, um, that's why she's not been here. But she's officially put in her resignation. Um, so we need to open up her position. This is a ward position, not an at-large. It is Ward Three. Um, so we'll publish that. Um, anybody in that ward is allowed to put in their interest. Um, and let's do, let's, I mean, my opinion, I would say let's start by hopefully having it by noon the next meeting, um, which would be January twentieth. Um, any interested parties? We can publish it that way. If we don't get any interested parties by then, we can open it up again.
Ashley, can I ask a question?
That day is Martin Luther King Day. Do, is the city observing that?
Yeah. So if the city observes, it'll go to the Tuesday.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it'd be the twenty-first, twenty-first. Yes? So that's only two weeks, but you think that's enough?
Hopefully.
Give anybody crazy enough to think about it or not think about it?
Motion to accept their resignation?
Okay, so we have a, another motion.
Yeah.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby to accept the resignation of Nancy Flint.
Second.
Second by Bob LaTurner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, sorry, sorry. Any opposed? And then do we need a motion to open, open acceptance or interest letter?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we'll just, tomorrow, we'll publish on the website and then paper. I'm good. We'll, we'll say noon on the twenty-first. Is that good? Okay, everybody good with that? All right, we have one more thing before we adjourn. Chief Dupkins?
Mine is also a letter of resignation. Uh, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as Chief of Police with the City of Galena. My last day as police chief will be February third, twenty-twenty-five. But I am willing to remain a part-time patrol officer here. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve as the chief. I am grateful for the experience and knowledge gained during my time here.
I don't really know what to say. I hate to hear it, but he said he wants right for him. So we got to respect that. And, um, so we will accept his resignation, I'm assuming. I don't know if they will not accept his resignation, but we'll accept his resignation. Um, no, you don't have to say that. Um, and then my opinion would be, starting tomorrow morning, we'll open up for applications, uh, with the same listing qualifications, however you want to work, like we did seven months ago, eight months ago. Here we are again. Is that okay with you guys? Do we need a motion to accept this? Huh?
No.
No? Okay. Okay.
Ashley, I always just like to think Chief Dupkins, so what he's done, the changes he's made, he's done a fantastic job. I'm very much appreciative.
I've said this a million times, that anybody, um, anybody as a first responder or volunteer in any capacity, whether it's city, whether it's church, whether it's, uh, youth, youth sports, um, you don't know what it's like until you know what it's like. Um, and you know that Paul, he volunteered for many years. Um, so it's really easy to sit back and cast stones until you're in the mix. Um, and really, I think everybody I've worked with over the years, they have the pure intentions. May not be what everybody always wants or always feels what's best, but I think what's in here is always the right, the right thing. Um, I've told people a million times, if you can go to bed with your conscience at night, then you're doing okay. Um, and not everybody can do that. Let's be honest. Not everybody can do that. But if, if you can go to bed and lay, lay in bed at night and sleep decently, um, then I think you're doing okay. So that goes for Chief Dupkins, that goes for, uh, all the members sitting here among me. Uh, sometimes I even have to tell myself that because sometimes I really think I'm crazy. Um, actually, I am crazy a little bit. My therapist has told me I'm a little bit crazy, but that's a joke, people. I don't have a therapist. So anyway, yes, I, I agree with your sentiment. Um, you know, I think even the worst person at the job, if they're willing to step in the line of fire, is probably doing better than, than ninety percent of the population. So I, I commend him as well. Um, I wish him the best. We will still see him around. Um, I, I think I said this publicly before, but, you know, he worked under my ex-husband now for many years. Um, and I always said, that's the best guy you have, guy or girl, that you have on your force. And he would be like, hey, what the heck? I mean, I said, including you, um, which now I really need. Take that off the record, people. Worries, please don't post that on social media.
Ashley, it was live.
Um, but, you know, I really, yeah.
It is true.
Don't make you hate me. We're in the long race. Come on.
Michelle's live.
Uh, oh, Michelle.
We're done.
Whatever. He deserves it. He deserves it, right? No, we get along. Um, but I really meant that. I mean, Noble is a very upstanding guy. And, um, I'm glad we had him when we did, and I'm glad he's willing to stick around. So, um, I think we have a bright future and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
So, all right, anybody like to go home?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby to adjourn.
Aye.
Second by Bob LaTurner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?